California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council Performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. We also have a notice and call of a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, which I'll also call to order at the same time. First item on the agenda is a public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and deal with the item on the special meeting, and I'll defer to staff as to who's presenting that.
Yeah, this item is simply to request an extension for some earmarks that we received from the federal government, a federal grant, for the High Desert Corridor project, and we need to take action on it before November 1st in order to extend those, so we can continue working with Metro and the two counties.
Doug, did you say High Desert Corridor or Nisqually interchange? Because the staff report talks about-
I was told it was High Desert Corridor. Is it the ones that have been switched over to in Nisqually?
Looking for a time extension on, from the State Department of Finance, for federal funds to be used for the design of the La Mesa-Nisqually I-15 interchange.
I'm sorry, my mistake. It is La Mesa-Nisqually.
Authorize the extension of the request form in connection with that.
Thank you, Andre.
All right, we'll entertain a motion on that item.
I'll make the motion.
Again.
Voice, okay. And all in favors? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This project, I don't understand what, which project it is. Is it the one that we're building right now?
Yes, it's for additional funding for the Nisqually Interchange Project.
And it comes from a grant?
Correct.
Aye.
All right, we'll now have announcement of closed session by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McEckern. We have four closed-session items. They are all existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9A. The case names and the case numbers are all set forth on the agenda, and to the extent there is any reportable action, we will report that either immediately at the close of the closed session, or immediately prior to the start of the seven o'clock meeting.
All right, we'll now move into closed session.
Oh, okay.
How many courses he have? About eight, probably?
Yeah. At least, yeah.
Up to her directly, I guess.
I'm sure there's nothing to do with these two things.
Yeah, couldn't be related.
Good evening. I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Council Performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. This time, we'll have any announcements out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor McEckern. We had four closed-session items. They were all existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9A. With respect to Item C, and the parties and the case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. There is reportable action with respect to Item C, which was the Creed 21 Inland Oversight Committee versus the City of Victorville, Rudy Cabralis et al. The direction and the reportable action is that the city voted to defend the city and Mr. Cabralis, and regarding that lawsuit, because we have to have a defense before the end of the month, and the vote to defend was three to one with Mayor McEckern abstaining because of conflicts, and Councilwoman Angela Vias voting no.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation tonight will be led by Pastor Larry White from Horizon Church, and Pledge of Allegiance by our Victorville Police Department Chief, Don Yoder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you bear your hearts and heads with me as we pray? Lord, we come to you this evening, and we recognize that as we consider the founding fathers of this country, we realize that you are truly our founding father. And so we pray tonight, even on the evening of this presidential debate, for our leadership. Lord, we pray that you would, Lord, help these leaders who would guide and direct our country, even as you did with our founding fathers. Lord, that you would give them clear wisdom. Lord, wisdom to make decisions that maybe even are beyond their understanding. Lord, I pray that you would help them to lead with courage, and, Lord, make the decisions that are hard to make, Lord. I pray this, Lord, as well, that you would help them to lead with passion. And this is all the way from the president, all the way through our local state and city officials, Lord, that they would lead with passion, because out of passion comes greatness. Lord, would you bless these proceedings tonight? I pray your hand be upon every part, every element of these proceedings tonight. Thank you, Lord, for your presence here. In your name we pray. Amen.
... of the United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor McEckern, if I might, I just want to supplement my comments on the closed-session item, reportable action, just so for the benefit of the public. That is the lawsuit, actually, by Corey Briggs. The plaintiff is a differently named, but it's the litigation that's challenging the Walmart decision.
All right, I'll now have our city clerk present the agenda to the council.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cellphones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby, and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There are a couple of revisions on tonight's agenda. Regarding Item Number Seven, Councilmember Vias has provided a memo for the city council, and that is on the dais for your information. And there is a request from the staff and city attorney to continue the public hearing items, Number Twelve and Thirteen, after those hearing items are open and any public testimony is taken. Those are the, all the revisions I have. Mayor McEckern?
All right, thank you. And we will not consider that a disruption.
No.
She's too cute.
Not a public outburst.
Yeah. All right, we'll now move into public comment, and I do have a few cards here. Dorothy Miller?
My name is Dorothy Miller, and we were at the meeting last time, and there was such a ruckus from the people from Spring Valley Lake, which I think was my opinion, they should have been out the door, because it was horrible with them hollering and yelling, and going, doing what they're doing to Mr. Cabral. That is not right. It's not the place to do it. Same thing with serving in here. I don't believe they could do that legally. I don't know, but I'm just telling you what I think. Another thing we have a big problem with is there's, we got one person on the council that sits up there and says, "Oh, the attorney fees are so high. Oh, attorney, 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 we need to change attorneys." We don't need to change attorneys. We need to change the council member. It's because things have gone on, and she's causing it. She's causing these lawsuits. So she needs to stop. She needs to stop and see what is really going on here. She has no idea. And it's just ridiculous of what went on. I was ready to walk out the door. I did finally holler to those gentlemen that was from Spring Valley Lake that was hollering and yelling, and told them to shut up, because after all, it's a meeting. It's not a play place. And the serving of that to Mr. Cabral, I still feel that should not have ever been done, and I feel that somebody better step up to the plate and do what they're supposed to do, and quit causing these lawsuits. We don't have the money to pay for lawsuits, 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 because somebody's not doing their job. Thank you.
Tom LaFortune?
Yeah, I want to talk about the city finances tonight or lack thereof, and some about they're going to be looking for compensation for the employees sitting up there at those chairs. I can't see how that's going to fly at all. If it flies, it'll be very short, because come November, I imagine it's going to be shut down and blown out of the water. It is cheap Chicago politics. That's all it is. It sounds to me like somebody around here, I've been talking to Rizzo, the former manager of Bell, and it didn't do him any good either. So think about that when you try to slide something in. It ain't going to work.
Anthony Lucero?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Anthony Lucero. I am a resident of this great city of Victorville. I'm a co-owner of a small business here in our town of Victorville. I also donate my time to feed the homeless down in Old Town Victorville at the St. John of Arc Church, Catholic Church. You all know we have a big problem there. There's, every other building is for lease. You know we need to clean that up. That's one of my issues. There's streets over here that need to be paved. We have, we have so many issues, but I'm here to tell you guys that we do need to clean that one area up, and I have been following Mr. Frank Atkins, and I'm here to tell the people of Victorville to vote for Frank Atkins for Victorville City Council. And Carlos Perano and Sean Hubbard, thank you.
Thank you, Frank Atkins.
Hello, everyone. My name is Frank Atkins. I reside in the city of Victorville, and I'm a candidate on the ballot for Victorville City Council. Last council meeting, there was over a 30-minute presentation by our Director of Public Works and Water, Sean McGlade, I guess, is that correct, on street lighting system finding options. As he informed us, as he informed us all, this current fiscal period, we will not meet our bills at period end, according to his presentation. The estimate amount will be over a half a million dollars, as he said upside down. Is that, is that correct? So since that meeting, any seated person, have anybody have any possible solutions? He gave three suggestions, turning off six of 10 lights, putting sensors on, all costing money, and then, of course, an assessment against people with vacant lands. Angela had suggestion number four, but like I say, I don't know if any of you have done any further looking into that, because the next council will probably have to be dealing with that issue. Also, counsel, on each of the following agenda items, I have just three simple questions. Most of the first two are usually answered on the agenda items. Prior to voting on each agenda item, if you could say what it is for, say the amount, and I guess more importantly, on each of the agenda items that you'll be voting on, say where the money's coming from. I understand some is a grant, but I'm wondering on some of the other ones, if we can address that at each of the agenda items, I'd appreciate that, so the public could know. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Larrabee?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council. I've hopefully come to bring some, start of some good news. We all, I think, can agree that one of the issues facing us here in Victorville is homelessness. So after much discussion with nonprofit leaders, church leaders, various individuals in the community, I've come to announce that Pastor Dane Davis and I, from First Christian Church, will be hosting a summit on October 30th at 10:00 a.m. at First Christian Church to discuss the issue of homelessness in our community, and what we can do about it. Invites would be church leaders, would be leaders of nonprofits that have all agreed to come, and I've come to extend a personal invitation to all of you, as well as to Mr. Robertson and Mr. Messler, and any appropriate staff to come and take part in the summit. You will all be receiving email invitations in the next 24 hours, and Pastor Dane Davis and I hope to see you guys there, so we can get to work on dealing with this issue. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Hakeem? I think maybe she has something to say to us, right?
This was not the plan. Hello, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Council, this was not the plan earlier today, but nevertheless, here it is. Ayanna is 10 months, and I want to spare you guys, so once I speak, we'll go ahead and leave. But one of the things, what I wanted to talk to you guys about was, what would you define as an ideal community in your minds? An ideal community, an ideal community has several characteristics that are universal. Those characteristics include a lot of different things that I won't go over right now in front of you, but I want you guys to think about that. What is the ideal community? And then, secondly, how close is Victorville to that ideal community? Is it closer than we think? I mean, we really have to, we really have to take an approach that's fair and really look at it. And then what steps are we taking, you as leaders, community leaders, we as citizens and everybody else? What steps are we taking as a community to become or work towards that ideal community? It takes leadership, I know. It takes patience, I know, and it takes people being able to drop their guard and do the people's business. It does. It takes people doing the people's business, doing the people's work. That's the ideal community. That's what, that's what the people, the voters, people that are running for reelection, candidates out there, that's what the people are looking for. Someone who has a vision, who could share that vision, who could put that vision to reality, that gets people talking. Not, not the divisive, dividing, diversity that we see, but something a little bit better, something that, that gets people to working together. We have all these nonprofits, everybody has a plan that they work, that they say they work, they're for the children. They say they have a plan. I'm trying to keep them laughing, but they have a plan, but they say that they're for the children, but nobody's talking, Mr. Mayor. We have all these different organizations, but nobody has sat down, had a Styrofoam cup of coffee and said, "Hey, you work in this area of the city, you work in this area of the city." I think that's what the people want to see, a little bit more vision towards that ideal community. And real quick, Hakeem Jr. had a question.
Why is the street, like, by the city library, why is that, like, messed up?
Why is the street by the city library messed up? Aliyah had a question. Aliyah Majid.
Has there ever been a girl mayor?
Has there ever been a lady mayor? I thank you guys for your time.
To the first question, that is actually a privately-owned street, but we'll get you a formal response to that, because we do have your information. That has been an issue that has been ongoing for a number of years, and yes, there has been. If you are able to walk into City Hall, not tonight, because you wouldn't be able to get in there tonight, but you will see a picture of, we have had a female mayor before.
Thank you for your time. Bye.
You're welcome. If we could get the majority of our residents to be involved, like those children have been involved tonight, that would be great, wouldn't it? Carlos Perano?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. All I wanted to do was follow up on the email that I had sent out on October 7th. I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't get, you know, omitted by accident. I know you guys can't respond, but on October 7th, I sent all of you guys an email on considering open public, opening public discussion on naming a street after Martin Luther King Jr. here in the city of Victorville. As I've been campaigning, I've been talking to different communities, and a lot of people have asked me, "How come we don't have that, when a lot of big cities have recognized the importance and the, the connection that it has to the communities?" I said, "I don't know. I don't know why." I think it's something that would be worth bringing up discussion, you know, he mentioned communities, the other gentleman, a little while ago. This is something that the community wants. It would be good for the community, and I don't think opening public discussion, at least, on that subject could be taken as a negative. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your response. It sounded like you were open to the idea. Mr. Rothschild, we kind of spoke, and it sounded like you were open to the idea. And Mr. Kennedy, you hinted that you would try to bring it up, just to open it a public discussion, so that the people can, can get that going. Ms. Vias, Mr. Gabrielis, I didn't get a response. I can resend the email, maybe you guys, if you didn't get it, but basically, all I was saying is, if we can at least start public discussion on it, to see if it's something that we can move forward, and, you know, have the people bring their case as to why we'd like to have that here. So that's all I want to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, those are all the cards I have under public comments, so we'll move into the rest of our agenda. Under the Library Board of Trustees, we do have the consent calendar, Agenda Item Number Four.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis.
Was there a report missing in my agenda? Because I only saw the one for August. It says there's one for July.
According to my agenda, July is page 16 of your agenda, and August is 18. I don't know if there was a page that got missed in your paper agenda, or perhaps?
Okay, that sounds good.
Motion carries unanimously.
Under the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there were no items at time of posting. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, under written communications, Agenda Item Number Five. This is a request to approve an amendment to the contract with PCI for SCLA runway rubber removal and repaint marking, and approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $27,472.20 for the additional work needed.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Six is a request to approve Amendment One to the sublease agreement with the Victor Valley College, VBC, authorizing the college to conduct an FAA-approved and certificated aviation airframe and power plant program, and secure additional parking space for an ancillary aircraft training aid.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this item has been brought to you for your attention, as you're familiar enough with the school, the AMP school that we have developed out at SCLA, and it's continuing to operate, and there's some representatives here from VBC that I'd like to be able to at least share with you some of what's been going on lately. It's probably been some time since you've had a briefing. But as you'll recall, one of the original purposes for having worked on and developed the AMP school was to help establish a qualified labor force for the maintenance-related companies that are actually doing business out at SCLA. And originally, and I can remember back when we had first chartered out to try to attract some of the manufacturing or maintenance-related companies that you have out there today, one of the biggest responses you were getting from those companies was that they needed a more qualified and more dedicated and more local labor force. So I think that was probably the largest impetus for the development of the school. The program has evolved over time, but started in partnership between the Airport Authority, the city, the County of San Bernardino, First District Supervisor Brad Mittelvelt has been instrumentally involved in providing funding. And the program initially started largely with, with grant funds that we obtained either through the state or the federal government. So it's been a very successful program. Feels like a year now that the program has actually been transitioned over to the Victor Valley College, to which we were able to identify long-term the program as likely best suited to be run by the VBC, and with that, they've actually made some great strides in continuing the program, expanding the program, and increasing the student population for the school. Very generally, they've been operating with us under a lease agreement. It's a no-cost lease agreement. Where effectively our contribution to the continued school effort has been not charging a lease rate associated with the buildings that they occupy. We also pay for some of the overhead costs, such as electricity and janitorial service, and we continue to do that and fund that out of the SCLA operating funds. This amendment has really been brought forward to you largely to amend the leasehold footprint to allow for some parking of some aircraft that they actually had donated to it. Those aircraft serve as training tools for the students that are part of the program, so it gives them real hands-on, visual perspective of working on aircraft. Also, it allows for the amendment of the uses provisions of the lease to allow for some FAA-certified testing operations to occur, which are actually critical at the end of the day for the, for the students going to the school to actually get their test and get their FAA-certified AMP license. So that is a background, and I certainly thought it would be appropriate, since, again, it's been some time since you've had an update, to invite representatives from the college. Mr. Peter Allen is here, I see in the audience, that can probably give you an update as to where the school is today, and maybe even share with you some forethought as to what life looks like going forward.
Peter?
Can, can we also, here, Peter, how many have participated in this program? How many have graduated? Where they're working? Do you know?
I have that information.
Good.
Well, Keith talked a lot about the original grant that came from Supervisor Mittelfeld, and that's a $500,000 endowment, which is used to pay the faculty that teach out of that program. We're very appreciative of the cooperation between the city of Victorville and Victor Valley College in continuing to provide the- and Victor Valley College in continuing to provide the facility for this, uh, training program. We currently have sixty-three students enrolled in, in the aviation classes, and the, the way it works is they work on a cohort. There's twenty-five students in each cohort. Uh, the next class will be made up from three hundred and eighty-four applications that we've received on our website for students to attend this class, the AMP class. So, that's three, we have to somehow come up with twenty-five successful students out of three hundred and eighty-four applications. So, that's going to be a challenge. It's a very popular class. Um, the, we, we have twenty-six of the students that are currently, uh, resident in the program, that are currently working at SCLA. They work for Southern California Aviation, Pacific Aerospace Research and Technologies, Northrop Delta, and General Atomics. So, uh, we've got quite a few employers that are employing the graduates from this program, not just graduates, but students that are currently enrolled in the program. Um, we have, uh, we have on loan, as Keith mentioned, two airplanes. They're both seven-twenty-sevens. One of them is a passenger airplane with no engines, but the interior is all intact, so students can work on the interior of the airplane and get, gets, practice their skills on, on, on that part of the training. All the seats and galleys are there. The other airplane, uh, is a seven-twenty-seven cargo plane which has engines, and so the students can actually fire up the engines and, um, practice, uh, you know, maintain the engines and all that kind of thing. Um, we, the college works very closely with the FAA to make sure that we're in compliance with the operational manuals and curriculum for the, for the school. Uh, we've received approval from the United States Air Force Real Property Management that we're in compliance with their regulations, and, uh, we've secured about $100,000 in Perkins Funds, which is a grant provided to, uh, CTE courses, uh, to help, uh, students transition from college to work. And then finally, uh, we recently completed a $30,000 upgrade to convert three, three, uh, classrooms into smart classrooms. And what that does is provides internet access. It provides the ability to, uh, have real-time solutions to issues in, in the classroom. And, uh, that has made a huge difference to the ability of the students to be able to complete their, uh, curriculum. So, uh, we're very proud of the program. It's been a great program for Victor Valley College. As I said, it's one of our more popular programs. Um, as you all probably know, we're going through, uh, financial difficulties at the college. Uh, if Proposition Thirty doesn't pass, we'll have another $3 million cut to our general fund budget, which means we're going to be reducing, uh, a significant number of sections, um, because we'll have about nine hundred unfunded full-time equivalent students. We're not going to cut the aviation program. The aviation, the aviation program will continue, uh, in the winter session and in the summer session, uh, because, you know, when the students are enrolled in a certain segment of the course, you can't stop them from continuing with that segment. They have to continue that segment so the next cohort can come in and take their segment. So, in spite of the fact that we'll, we'll be cutting a, a lot of general education sections, uh, we will not be cutting any of the aviation program sections. Any questions?
Just a couple of add-ons to that. This is an incredible program, and it was started under Jim Worsham, and he carried it the first few years, and then Brad came in with the, the grant to begin to build it, and, and finally, and the most significant thing is that the college became a full partner in this thing. And those jobs out there are careers. They're not just jobs. They're careers, and not only are they self-fulfilling unto themselves to, to have that imminent coming out of the college, but the aviation industry all over knows of this school that's here on this airport. And so, as we begin to expand, we're not, we're just beginning the expansion. We've got four, all of our hangars out there and everything are full. We're going to build more hangars. And the reason that the aviation industry, FedEx and others, are looking at us is that school's sitting there, they know they can put those people in play out there. And I bet you, I don't know what the statistics, I'd be surprised if, if more than a handful of them get away from us for not getting hired immediately right at the airport. And those that don't get hired at the airport, they're either going to get hired in town here with some technical job, or somebody down the hill, LAX, or somebody else is going to grab them off. And that's an incredible thing. It's self-lending to twenty-five right now, but hopefully, as more and more we get more research in play, uh, that school will even expand some more.
Essentially, we're limited by the size of the classrooms at the moment and the number of faculty. If we had more classrooms and more faculty, we could have more spots. So, that, that's a, uh, that's a factor that we have to think about. Jim? No? Did I answer all your questions? I didn't answer them?
You answered them all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Uh, that is all the cards I have, so I'll return to the council for a decision.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, Agenda Item Number Seven, I am going to abstain on this one, uh, only due to the brokerage commission fee issue. Uh, Brad Co. and, uh, Joe Brady are a client of, uh, my insurance agency, so I will step off the dais for this item.
I have some questions. Are you?
Let me, let me start it first. Uh, Item Number Seven, uh, is a request to, to approve a standard sublease agreement, and, uh, do we have a staff report on it before we begin discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and members of the council, uh, do appreciate the opportunity to bring this item before you. This item involves the sublease of, um, hangar and office facilities at SCLA. These are facilities, uh, that had been recently vacated by the U.S. Army Black Hawk Operation, building six, uh, seven sixty-one and seven seventy-one is how, how we typically refer to them. And these are facilities that are in the, uh, remote, uh, area in the northeast quadrant of, of the airport grounds on the airport. Uh, this transaction, um, is, is the result of, um, marketing efforts, um, and actually having been approached by, um, a broker representing a PAG. Um, this is a transaction that we negotiated, uh, with the broker, uh, on PAG's behalf, and, and what you have before you is a five-year sublease transaction, uh, that is actually valued at, uh, over the first five years, $1.6 million. Uh, it breaks down to about $26,000 a month. Uh, there are some concessions in the initial year or the first year of the transaction. Uh, there is a brokerage commission. There also is, um, an allowance for tenant improvements in an amount not to exceed, uh, $25,000. Uh, that's largely for cosmetic improvements to make the, um, office areas more usable, things like painting and carpet. Um, but with that, um, we had actually entertained, um, this and including two other transactions. This was the transaction, uh, that we negotiated with the highest value for the airport and the most expedient in terms of, uh, occupancy. Uh, the expected start date for this tenant to, uh, take on the facility would be November first. Um, this is funding that would go to the airport operations. It's funding that hasn't, had not been budgeted. As a part of our budgeting effort, we do conservatively, uh, budget, and for facilities that don't have a lease term attached to them, we certainly don't budget those revenues. Um, and accordingly, this, effectively, this, uh, revenue then becomes new revenue, uh, for the airport operations. Uh, staff, staff is recommending approval.
There's a memorandum here, I don't know if you had time to see it, from, uh, Councilwoman Angela Vias, with, uh, there's seven questions. I, I don't know if, um, you know, if you want to get into that, or, uh, if it's, if it's not, you know, if, if the time is not that critical, maybe we can just, uh, carry it over until these are answered.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I, I think the questions raised, uh, raised before by Councilwoman Av- uh, Vias are actually very good questions. I have no problem answering, um, the questions as they relate to the transaction. To continue this item, uh, unfortunately, would delay, um, the occupancy, uh, of this hangar unit, and certainly the sooner we can get revenue into the coffer, I would certainly advise we do that. Um, and, and the questions raised very specifically, uh, focus around just the, um, commission, uh, component of the transaction, and, and they're fairly, uh, straightforward questions. So, if, if appropriate, and, and Councilwoman Vias presented this, I, I, I don't have a problem just reading the questions off her unless you want to read them.
I would, I would go ahead and request that. Can you just go one by one and just answer those questions?
You know, you, you might not even have to go one by one. I, I just don't understand, um, if we have staff that work for, for you, for the airport, and then we have Sterling that we contract with, why, why are we paying a commission fee to someone on the outside to, to do this? Why isn't our staff or the people we contract with contacting PAG?
Uh, yes, and good questions, and I think I can speak from a general perspective to, to answer your, uh, questions. Uh, first of all, Sterling is not involved in the on-airport operations. We did actually renegotiate our contract with them. Uh, I believe it, it feels like late 2010, I think it was November or October of 2010, where we restructured our agreement with them and, and basically backed them out of anything to do with the on-airport operations, including asset management and including, uh, the marketing and the leasing. So, we did take that on. Um, that, uh, the marketing element is something that we took on ourselves, uh, and, and we market in, in multiple forms, including, um, making and preserving relationships we have with the brokerage community. Uh, it's very traditional, and, and I, I think the easiest way to compare, uh, our role as owners of real estate out there is, uh, we are in the real estate business because we own real estate, uh, and to do transactions, it's very customary, very traditional, uh, to have to compensate brokerage commissions, uh, in cases where, uh, either the lessy or the lessor, uh, is represented. Uh, certainly, we've done transactions where, um, there hasn't been a broker involved, and of course, that becomes effectively a savings in commission to us as the lessor. Uh, but in this particular case, we, uh, marketed, uh, the facilities. Uh, we were approached, in this case, uh, by the broker representing PAG. Um, and, and PAG is a tenant, uh, at the former George Air Force Base at SCLA, but they're not a tenant or, or a current tenant of SCLA-A. We do not lease them facilities. Um, I had actually been approached after I'd already been talking with a couple of other tenants, and certainly price and timeframe to occupy made this transaction work. Um, but very typically, uh, if, if you were to do, uh, an arms-length transaction, uh, with a, 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 a brokerage firm where they were representing, uh, you on property, they have, uh, the ability to charge, uh, commission. Typically, the commission is broken down to be, um, a percentage that represents the buyer's representation or the, the seller's representation. That's very customary, uh, for six percent to be a standard fee. Um, and in fact, we do have, uh, representation on property that's not on the airport that actually went through a bidding process for the brokerage services, where we actually, um, have identified six percent as the customary, um, fee structure. In this particular case, uh, broken down, the commission that's being paid to the Bradco Companies is two and a half percent, uh, and that two and a half percent is actually structured over time and actually even based upon performance. So, very much different than the typical, uh, payment upon execution of lease. Uh, we actually are requiring performance by the tenant to actually, um, uh, pay and be current on the lease, uh, and also we did negotiate, uh, a commission that's even less than, uh, what would be typically characterized as the, as the traditional, um, um, real estate commission. Um, so, it's not something, um, that was developed arbitrarily. It was negotiated. Uh, Mr. Brady, in fact, did represent, uh, the PAG team, and, uh, quite candidly, especially based upon past experience, uh, with PAG, had, uh, Mr. Brady not been involved, it's not likely that I would have been bringing this transaction before you tonight.
Okay, I still didn't get my question answered. Why didn't our staff contact PAG?
We did not know that they were in the market for this facility.
Do we have marketing staff here?
Uh, we do have, uh, marketing staff that works under my direction, yes.
I, you know, there can't be a lot of people in the need for hangars. I would think that there would be like a list out there that they would put out there. I, I just have a problem with paying staff and then paying commissions on the outside. Um, what does Sterling do?
Well, as it relates to the on-airport, they do not represent us. They do not do anything for us as it relates to the on-airport operation. Sterling is, uh, contracted, uh, under our master agreement to be the master developer for the off-airport property, uh, so they're responsible for marketing and developing, uh, that property. And, um, quite candidly, a lot of the testimonials that you saw late last year with the M&amp;M Mars and the UFI project, uh, the industrial stuff off-airport, that's a good example as to what they're responsible for and what their role is.
Does all of the brokers in this area know that, that, that they got a shot at this to get forty thousand by leasing the hangar? I mean, or is it just, we're just going to, you know, one, one, one guy, that he gets the inside information? I, I want to make sure that, is, is there an RFP that goes out, or, or how, how is this done so I know it's being done fairly, and we're not just giving our buddies, you know, forty thousand?
Keith, isn't this the same as a typical, um, housing sale transaction where the buyer wants to retain a broker? Often they'll retain a broker, a buyer or a lessy will retain a broker to negotiate a transaction and try and get the best terms of the deal for them. We have no control over that. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. It's, it's common knowledge. I mean, if, if you're in the industry and there's a, a sale, a buyer and a sale transaction, there's a commission to be earned. Uh, if there's a lease transaction and there's a transaction between lessor and lessy, there's certainly a commission to be, uh, gained. In fact, as a part of the entire entrepreneurial spirit of the, of the entire brokerage industry, uh, they'll try to buy or sell or, or lease anything they possibly can to earn a commission. So, as far as the knowledge about whether or not commissions can be earned at SCLA, there's been no secret about that fact. And we've paid commissions in the past. It's customary, and it's part of, uh, the course of doing business if you actually want to, uh, lease out or sell some of your facilities. Uh, in this particular case, you know, what our marketing team did do, um, and we believe it's partly what helped drive the price up to get close to what, uh, much closer to what we were asking. But we actually marketed to a much larger macro audience. We went directly into the UAV industry and, and tried to create awareness either through advertising or through direct mail blasts. Uh, I remember sending direct mail blasts directly to companies like General Atomics to try to expand some UAV presence, uh, at, out at SCLA. And resulting from some of those efforts, we were able to get interest. In fact, I had two parties interested, and largely because we had two parties interested, it actually created a much more attractive negotiating environment for us as the airport to drive a higher price, which in this particular case, we did drive a higher price. Our original asking, uh, when we listed, uh, the property or at least publicly noticed the property, uh, we were asking for $30,000 a month. And, uh, we felt, um, certainly that was high, but that's what negotiations are traditionally about. Uh, getting the, the $26,000 a month in this particular transaction certainly fit within our parameters of what we are willing to, uh, recommend to you as a board. Uh, and also, uh, when compared to the rest of the facilities that we lease, we have a very large portfolio of, of, uh, facilities that we lease, this is actually priced, uh, greater than our average lease rate for comparable facilities. So, altogether, we think, uh, your, your marketing staff did what they were supposed to do, and that's get you a transaction that had the best price attached to it.
So, when you have an empty hangar, where is that advertised at? Where do brokers see that at?
Well, it, it does depend on the type of hangar. Um, if it's, if it's a wide-body hangar, it might be publications that are, um, promoted by Aviation Week. Aviation Week has a number of different...
In this particular case, where was it advertised at?
Uh, I could find the publication for you. I know there was one because I seen it, and I actually approved the advertisement, uh, but I actually had my, uh, marketing coordinating staff do the procurement and the placements.
Keith, is there any reason, um, that we wouldn't consider an offer brought to us by any broker?
I generally have an approach to consider anything, and if it's reasonable, I'll, I'll definitely pursue it and try to make a recommendation to you, uh, positive or negative.
Well, you know, it's interesting, just as a, as a side note, I, my son is in the commercial real estate business, and they do a lot of commercial, um, leasing, more than selling. They do both, but they do leasing. And I asked him, "Are, are you looking at any of the lease opportunities out at the base?" And he said, "No, that's really not the market that we work in. We're, we're more interested in the retail kind of facilities that are going to be in shopping areas." That's it. Because that's where their brokerage has decided to focus. So, I'm not sure, even if... that's where their brokerage has decided to focus. So, I'm not sure, even if every broker in town knew it was available, that they'd all be jumping at it.
That's a very good point, and that's partly why, you know, we didn't necessarily expect that our audience to lease this building was in our backyard. I mean, this is a very niche market. You really have to find a way to get into the decision-makers' minds as to those that are actually operating, whether they're conducting maintenance or painting operations, or actually needing to store, say, corporate aircraft. That was one targeted industry that we thought might be suitable for these hangars. These hangars aren't the big wide-body hangars that you're used to seeing right there on the apron line. These are hangars that were designed much more for helicopter use, and that's why we actually spent more of our time chasing after the unmanned aviation flight systems, because we thought that would be the most suitable in terms of type of user that's out there in the marketplace, given the physical dimensions we had in the buildings, notwithstanding its remote nature. It's actually very remote. These are the former alert hangars, and they were the first responders, and they were designed really to be a first responder facility for jet aircraft to fight off a terrorist threat. Back when they were developed, it was believed that the Japanese were, you know, our biggest threat on the Western Pacific. So, that's what these facilities are for, and they're not the most universal to, say, a wide-body or even a narrow-body jet.
Other questions? Okay, call for the vote.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent, and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number eight is request to approve the rejection of the submittals for the award of a contract for SCLA ILS DME tower maintenance.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number nine is request to accept the notice of completion for ES-12-006 SCLA-A hangar 676 fire suppression system repairs.
Is this really the completion?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council are pleased to advise to you that this, we are done, at least with this facility's fire suppression system. We did get the fire suppression system certified, and it is operational. So, we are glad about that, and we certainly appreciate your willingness to work with us on all of the change orders associated with a lot of the surprises that we ran into dealing with this system.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 10, this is request to award a professional services contract to PB America for SCLA Runway 321 rehabilitation design in the amount of $599,201.53, and approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $59,122.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this is the byproduct of a recent grant award that you received from the FAA in connection with what will ultimately become the redesign and reconstruction of Runway 321. Runway 321 is your crosswind runway, and by technical standards, it is being fixed with Band-Aids, for lack of better description. It's definitely in need of repair, and I think if there's any highlight to this is that this item allows us to get moving right away on the actual design work. And understanding the FAA process, the experience traditionally is, you don't typically, as an airport, get a grant for design services unless they're expecting to fund the construction. So, what we're planning to do is move forward with this design work. The federal fiscal calendar starts October 1st of every year, so we're certainly expecting to get this design work done, and we're hoping around this time next year to have gotten the actual notice of award for the runway reconstruction, which we're currently estimating at roughly an $8 million construction project.
I'd just take note of the fact that this is the reason why we're making money out the airport, to leverage grants like this where feds come in and they offer a substantial amount of money here to improve the runways, and then we can put up 10%. If we weren't making money out the airport, it would be difficult to come by this kind of leverage money.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Under the successor agency to the RDA, agenda item number 11, this is request to: 1. Receive the agreed-upon procedures report for filing; 2. Approve the results of the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund Due Diligence Review, DDR; 3. Authorize retention of funds in the amount of $2,591,125 to fund future debt service payments; and 4. Approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $7,216,798 payable to the San Bernardino County Auditor Controller for compliance with ABX-126 and AB-1484 for distribution to various taxing entities.
Mr. Mayor and members of the board, staff is reluctantly making this recommendation to you because we're not excited about having to dissolve in Victorville what has been a successful operation in having run a redevelopment agency. This is the byproduct of the governments, the governor's raid on local jurisdictions, cities in particular, and their greatest tool in actually trying to do economic development. The $7.2 million fiscal impact is where we're seeking the ability to encumber those funds and basically deposit those funds with the county auditor controller. We do believe the actual amount required to be distributed is going to be less. We actually expect it to be $6,785,000. The difference, which is $431,000, we believe can be retained to help satisfy the retirement of some principal owing between the former redevelopment housing fund and an SCLA bond fund. But altogether, the two big items that you're dealing with in here involve an AUP, which is an acronym for...
Agreed-upon Procedures.
Agreed-upon Procedures. There's too many acronyms.
Believe it or not, I've read them, Keith. I don't know.
There's also a due diligence review report, and I would expect that you read it because it had a lot to do with accounting. And the agreed-upon procedures report was called out in the original legislation, intending to identify clearly the assets and liabilities of former redevelopment agencies. It was also intended to help identify inappropriate transfers of assets. And in our particular case, our agreed-upon procedures audit didn't find anything wrong with what we had done in the meantime while things had been transitioned towards dissolution. The DDR, the due diligence review, actually took things one step forward, resulting from AB-1484, which actually attempted to quantify the amounts of unencumbered funds that need to be returned to the county auditor controller and then effectively distributed to the respective taxing entities. This $7.2 million represents the unencumbered housing funds that were being managed by your redevelopment agency. This was the product of very prudent cash management, and quite candidly, was anticipated to be used to help fund some of the reuse and redevelopment activities in Old Town. So, if there's a desire to try to quantify what the direct negative impact is to, say, revitalization effort in Old Town, certainly this is one way to attempt to measure that, notwithstanding, of course, the long-term effect of not having to be able to rely on that tax increment going forward. This is an item that was approved last week by the Oversight Board. The Oversight Board did amend the recommendation, which is the same thing that I'm asking for from you tonight, and that is to authorize the distribution of up to $7.2 million. However, we've already sought from the state comptroller's office that we only be required to distribute $6.7 million. With that, staff is reluctantly recommending approval.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if there is a silver lining, the way this is supposed to work, and I say "supposed to work" because we haven't seen it happen yet, is this goes back to the county and then is distributed to all the taxing entities, the city of Victorville being one of those taxing entities. Assuming they follow the typical tax rates as they're supposed to, we should, if everything goes as planned, we should get probably close to $1 million to the city's general fund when these funds are distributed. The remaining funds will go to school districts and to the county, as well as some of the smaller districts.
If I'm understanding this correctly, Doug, this $7.2 million is going to be taken from the 20% housing fund portion of RDA, sent to the counties, so that the state will not send the same $7.2 million that they would have otherwise sent from the state portion of property taxes. This is the...
Have I got that right? Yeah, I think generally that's correct. I think the best way to illustrate it, the way we understand it, is the state has traditionally backfilled the biggest taxing entities, which are schools. So, certainly, this helps relieve the state's obligation to make that backfill to schools. It's how we understand it.
The schools are not going to be better off on this $7.2 million. They're just going to be in the same place, and the state won't be sending them that money.
That's how we understand the process.
Actually, in some cases, I believe even worse than they would have otherwise been.
And did I understand the report correctly? The county used our city auditors to justify the numbers, and go over the numbers and come up with a break?
They did.
Name auditor?
They did.
Those people?
Yes, Mike, they used our auditors.
Go figure.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
All right, under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City Council performing housing functions of the former RDA, there were no items at time of posting. Moving on to the City Council agenda, we do have continued public hearings. Agenda item number 12 and 13. Mr. DeBornowski, I understand that staff's requesting a continuance on both these items, so it'd be appropriate for me to reopen the public hearing, any testimony, and then continue the items?
That would be correct, and it's not staff that's asking for the continuance. It's mine, and if I might give you the rationale for my request, you know, it's my understanding both of these projects are supported by the city. They've been supported by the Planning Commission already, and I assume are supported by this council. My concern is that these are projects that have been challenged by Corey Briggs. He's the same person previously that challenged the Walmart project. He has now filed suit on that project. He has filed six, or challenged six of the projects pending before the city at this point. The difference today is that at 3:00 this afternoon, I was made aware that he has now actually filed against the St. Mary's project. And the difference with that is now I have the opportunity, would have the opportunity, to see what his complaint looks like with respect to the St. Mary's project. His challenges to these two projects and his challenges to the St. Mary's projects are typically on the same kinds of grounds. They challenge CEQA, they challenge our general plan amendment. So, it would give us the opportunity to provide a response. I know staff would be prepared to provide a response. Doesn't believe there's a lot of merit to Mr. Briggs's claims. I'd like the opportunity to look at the lawsuits, and that way, I think, staff would be in a position to prepare responses as part of the administrative public hearing process, so that we can make these two cases bulletproof and hopefully knock out any lawsuit at the initial stages. So, it's essentially my request. It's not staff's. Again, you know, I know that, I think both the proponents of the projects want to proceed, but the city is going to be sued. It did get sued in the St. Mary's litigation, and I'd just like an opportunity, I know it's a three-week delay, to have a chance to prepare a responses to whatever is in that complaint, so that we can make these things bulletproof, or as bulletproof as we can.
If the city is sued, they also sue the entity that's proposing the project?
They sue the entity that's the proponent of the project, and in most of our instances, we have an indemnification requirement that the applicant is required to indemnify the city in case of those challenges. So, I think there's a benefit actually to the applicant here if we have the opportunity to present a case and present a response that is dispositive of all the issues raised in the complaint.
So, if we lose the lawsuit, the applicant has to give the city the money that was involved in the law?
That's correct. They're required to indemnify the city in connection with these planning commission items.
And you think in, what, two or three weeks, you're going to be able to...
I definitely just want to have the opportunity to look at Mr. Briggs's complaint. He sued us on Walmart. He sued us now on St. Mary's and is trying to stop that project. He has provided notices of actions on three of the other projects, so the same arguments are going to come up. The arguments in the Walmart case that we've seen are a little bit different. This one is very similar. The St. Mary's project is very similar to the two projects that are before you tonight on zone changes and general plan amendment on one of them. So, it's my request, and it's up to your, you know, discretion as to if you want to proceed or not. I would, if you do decide, I would definitely recommend, again, opening the public hearing, taking whatever testimony is there, and then just continuing it to the nearest possible date.
All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing on agenda items number 12 and 13. Anyone wishing to address the City Council on agenda item 12 or 13?
Evening. I'm with agenda item 12, Victory Christian Center. My name is Gisele White. I'm one of the board members and the reporting secretary. The pastor's out of town. He did give me authority to speak on his behalf and that behalf of the church as well. Just as you had another proposal tonight that you said is going to delay them moving in and moving forward with their vision and what it is they have to do, this is the same thing that we're looking at. I know the church does not want to indemnify to the city. I don't even think that's feasible for us to even consider that. But with all the time that's gone by, and we've been trying to get this use permit, and we're trying to help the community to build. You had a gentleman talking about what kind of community are we going to have here? And if we keep and continue to allow all these people, this person, to throw all these notices of actions on every project that comes forward in the city, is that right for him to bestow his whatever grandiose plans he has on everyone that's here? He's really put the city in a lockdown position. And for our church right now, we're spending extra dollars because we sold the property that we did have here in Victorville to another church. They took over possession the first of the month when the escrow closed, and now we're leasing space at Comfort Suites just to hold our Sunday services and our Tuesday night Bible studies. And so, that's costing us additional monies. I don't know if Mr., whatever his name is...
Briggs.
If he's willing to reimburse us these monies that we are putting out for this additional lease, but I don't think that it's right for the city to put everything on lockdown because of one person. I understand as an attorney, you want to make sure there's no backlash coming. This was presented a few weeks ago, and if you have not seen his notice of action, so that you could know, can we move forward or not, don't lump us in with Walmart and with St. Mary's, because you're talking huge entities, or we're just talking a small, little community church that's here to fulfill a vision.
The difference today has been in the past, Mr. Briggs is basically what I would call almost an extortionist. He typically challenges projects with the hopes of getting a settlement payment. His tactics seem to have changed on these last two, where he is now filing the suit. Did not think he was going to file a suit on St. Mary's, because it seems to be a popular project up here. At 3:00 today, I got notice from the attorneys for St. Mary's that he has in fact filed a suit. My request to the council is just that we have the opportunity to look at that suit. It will probably, the same allegations, I would assume, are going to be in the challenge, because he's put us on notice that he's going to challenge your project, and just to be able to prepare a better response at this time in the proceedings. Again, it's up to the council to decide, and I understand that, you know, the hurt and the pain it puts you through. I understand that.
Well, my understanding is his challenge is based on noise and traffic problems.
And so, he, he uses to his advantage some of the vague provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. And he litigates and typically throws a shotgun complaint. A lot of these issues in a shotgun complaint, I mean, he just basically alleges everything regardless of it, whether it has merit or not. I just want the opportunity to go through the complaint and see those issues that may have merit if staff has responded to them adequately, and that we feel like we have a very strong position in terms of blowing him out of the water in case he does, well, I think he will sue.
Well, if the council decides to continue this, I encourage all of you on Sunday morning at 9:00 to drive up Asprey Road in Silica, that intersection, see how much traffic there is not, because there's no traffic there at 9:00 on a Sunday morning. At 7:00 on a Tuesday evening, there's no traffic in that intersection. So we need to really move forward with this so you can take us out of the knot that he's got you guys in, and I don't know what you're going to do with him, but he should not be able to affect everyone in Victorville. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council and folks from the church, just so you're aware, all of our agenda items that come through planning commission do have an indemnification clause as one of the conditions of approval, and this one is actually in, in their conditions of approval. You would be required to indemnify the city against the lawsuit that Mr. Briggs files, and I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that in case this does go forward and ultimately he does file the lawsuit. That, that would be a requirement as part of the conditions of approval.
Just one other little observation, you know, we run into this constantly, and there is a solution to this, really, recognizing anybody can sue anybody in this country for anything. That, that's a fact, but there are regulatory rules that can be protected, and what the state ought to do, they won't do, but they ought to do, is set standards that you have to meet to even be a litigant against regulatory agencies. The CEQA is, is a classic example of anybody from Nob Nobster, Missouri on, that could sue anybody for anything and shut down a major project like the hospital or anything else. So what this state, they'll never get the head in the game, but what they ought to do is say, okay, before you can do, file a lawsuit against CEQA, you have to have standing. And that might be a city's agency, or a special district agency, or the county. Some agency has to be, have the standing, not just any individual that's out there looking for a lot of legal fees and everything else. That's what ought to happen. So in all of these things, as we're going through and trying to protect our pocketbook and everything else, there are solutions out there, but the solutions, a lot of them rest in the state legislator or the federal government in some cases.
I would add to that postscript that the legislature has actually, on very few occasions, tried to amend the provisions of CEQA to fast-track projects, but they happen to be football projects, football stadiums in LA that people want to have built. So it's just, it's absolute, of course.
Well, I not only think it's wrong, I think it's unconscionable, but, but we have a legal system, and he knows how to work that legal system. I think extortion is a, is a pretty descriptive term. I don't know what goes on inside his head, but I know he wants to delay everything he can delay and add cost, and with the hope of getting some kind of settlement. And the best thing we can do for your church, as well as Mr. Tate's project, as well as all the other projects, is make sure we've done everything exactly right so that if it comes to some kind of legal action, our position's defensible and it doesn't come back and become a cost to you. And I'm sorry for the delay, but I'm going to have to go along with the city attorney on this. I'm really sorry for the delay.
All right, that was the only card I had on this agenda item. Anyone else wishing to address the council under agenda item number 12 or 13?
Ian, would you formally open the public hearing?
I apologize, I thought I did.
I would do it separately.
Okay, well, a public hearing is open on agenda item number 12. Anyone else wishing to address the council on agenda item number 12?
Yes, Robert Larrabee. I just wanted to say for the record, the, the church is located well back from, from Asprey Road, so some of the claims that Mr. Briggs are making are just, you know, I'm sure Mr. DeBartowski will tell you, are just ridiculous. But I was hoping that Mr. DeBartowski, I'm doing terrible pronouncing your name today.
You're doing well, DeBartonowski.
Yeah. Anyways, I'm hoping that maybe you could share with the council, if the council were to not grant your request, what would the scenario be if they went ahead and voted to go ahead with the project? What, what kind of things could we expect, just so that we have a little bit more information from a different scenario on the other side?
Certainly, what would happen is you'd, you'd close, complete the public hearing process tonight, close the public hearing, that essentially cuts off the administrative process. So staff would have to respond to the comments received to date, would include those in the record, but that then becomes the administrative record upon which the lawsuit will get filed. And I would say, given the fact that he's filed on two of these projects already, it's very, very highly likely that he will sue. What I want to see is what his latest lawsuit that came in late this afternoon says, so that we can see that we have responded to whatever allegations he's making and have those already addressed in our response. Without the benefit of doing that right now, we would prepare a response. It may work, it may be fine, I just don't know that because I haven't seen what other claims he's alleged in his complaint.
Yeah, thanks for providing that additional information, sir. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to address us on agenda item number 12? All right, seeing no one, I will ask that that item be continued to November 6th?
November 6th.
2012, and I'll open the public hearing on agenda item number 13. Anyone wishing to address us on agenda item number 13? All right, seeing no one, I will ask that that item be continued to November 6, 2012. We'll now move into our consent calendar, agenda item number 14.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 15, request to proceed with conveyance of lot A, tract 16943, to the owner of the adjacent property to the south at no cost and reserve a drainage easement over the subject lot.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 16 is request to award a contract to George Bryant Construction for DFAD number 2, Dos Palmas/Highway 395 Basin Clearing Project, number BM13-013, not to exceed $29,328.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 17 is request to approve the La Mason Esqually Interchange Contract Change Order, number 20, in the amount of $260,990.68, to provide access to the First Assembly of God property and agree to pay 100% of the change order cost.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Request to award a contract to Victor Concrete for the piggyback purchase of concrete work from project number BM12-032 for project BM13-016 Phase 2 to mitigate Paseo erosion occurrences in LMAD number 2 Eagle Ranch in an amount not to exceed $49,000.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Vias and I each live in Eagle Ranch, so we need to recuse ourselves.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
On agenda item number 19, due to involving the St. Mary Medical Center project, I'll be recusing myself, as I have in the past.
I have a question, please, Tom.
Item 19 is a request to approve the combined system impact and facility study with Southern Cal Edison, your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and members of the council. The utility went through a transition probably three years ago or so from attempting self-generation that didn't work to actually buying wholesale power and selling it on the retail market to select customers. Most of them are at, excuse me, at SCLA. This would be potentially a new customer, and what we're requesting is to have Southern California Edison perform the study work in order to see if we can accomplish our goals and put in the infrastructure necessary to, to provide electric power to St. Mary's Medical Center. This is effectively a chance at new additional revenue that will help us to continue to get closer to a balanced utilities budget, including paying off the bond funds that we currently owe from the failed Foxborough Power Plant.
Doug, is this a shared cost, or is this only...
Is this our portion? This is entirely our cost to do the study work. Ultimately, we have very favorable projections that for not only this study, but also all the infrastructure that would be required based on our initial estimates, we believe that we would repay all of those funds to the utility fund within less than two years and begin generating significant revenues.
And St. Mary's will be able to buy it from us cheaper than they can from the Edison.
Our rates historically have been cheaper than Edison, yes.
The other question?
Yeah, I'm not really convinced, I mean, how, when you say that you have projections, who gives you those projections?
Actually, Mr. Lind Viallo is in the audience. He's our consultant for Victorville Municipal Utility Services, and he's been providing these sorts of projections and doing the study work for us for several years now. He's one of the primary reasons why the utility has turned over and become revenue positive from an operational standpoint.
Can you give me an example of another facility that we supply electricity to that we can do it cheaper than Edison?
Most of the facilities at SCLA, any of the new facilities, are being supplied electricity through our system. We have a substation out there. Very similarly, this would put a very small substation on, effectively on St. Mary's property, and we would operate that and provide them with electrical power. We can buy wholesale power at significantly below the retail rates. We don't have a profit to make, we don't have a profit to share with our shareholders. So that's how we can provide slightly lower than Edison prices to our retail customers and ultimately return those dollars back to the utility so that we can make sure that we get all of our bonds paid off and ultimately hope to someday return monies to the general fund. That was the original concept back in 2000, as I understand it, when the utility was formed.
What are the cha, so we're going to spend $80,000 on a study, and that's going to be our, our cost, and then you talked about a substation, do we build that?
We build that, yes.
And how much will that cost?
Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was estimated, and part of this study would determine that final cost, but I believe it was estimated at $1.8, $1.9 million? I see his head shaking, yes. That's everything. That's the substation and everything, all of the electrical to get it down from the grid and then take it to the hospital as well.
So about $2 million to get it going?
Roughly, yes.
And then, and then you still think that you could recoup that in electricity?
Yes, we do believe that. Lynn, why don't you go ahead and step up to the mic and give us the, the current estimate for time to recoup those, those dollars, and then what the monthly or annual revenue would be once we've recouped all of that capital interest upfront cost?
One of the things that we were asked by St. Mary's was what the city's rates were, and as you may know, they have a facility in Apple Valley. So we had available to us the hospital facility in Apple Valley, Edison's current rates and the city's current rates. So comparing, making that comparison, St. Mary's costs are 8% less. So they were attracted to the concept of the city supplying electricity to the new facility. That was their motivation.
How much less?
8% less.
And Lynn, what would the, the revenue picture look like for Vemos into the future?
It's a 98-acre site, and I think that we gave some statistics about what the load is, and it's about five and a half megawatts, and I think the sales are about 25,000 megawatt hours. And the forecasted net revenues to the city, that is, billed revenues less the cost of power, and the city contracts for power out into the future, in round numbers, is about a half a million dollars.
You know, I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this because, you know, we're talking about $2 million, and then I would have thought we would have had like a PowerPoint or something, it was like pulling teeth trying to get him to come up here and talk. And I, I just feel like we're taking a bath in this, and we're going to get, I mean, like, this is, this is a lot of money to put forward with just a few words being said about what the revenue could be.
Okay, first off, it wasn't pulling teeth. I was attempting to answer the questions as best I could. When it got to a level of detail, I thought it appropriate to ask Mr. Viallo to get up. I, I did. With regard to the, the ultimate contract with St. Mary's, is that something that would come back to the council later? This is simply to do the study work so that we can provide accurate, detailed, final numbers to the council when we do come back. We do have to make that investment if we want to hope to gain their business.
May I add something? The only other thing I would add is that our estimate was based on bringing service from Aqueduct Substation all the way to the site across 15. Our initial discussions with Edison would be that that would not be required, so we really anticipate our capital cost to be a relatively, much smaller than the number that the city manager estimated. And that's what we'll find out when the study agreement gets completed, so we may be looking at a total capital investment of four to $500,000.
Are, are you an employee of the city, or are you a consultant?
I'm a consultant. This is all that we do, though, is serve public utilities, have done it for many years, my entire career.
And the net revenues in Vemos are the best available method we have for retiring that, that bond debt after the Carter Burgess adjustments and whatnot. That's an ongoing source of revenue into the future to retire what will probably be about a $35, $40 million remaining debt.
That's correct. And the only thing I would add is that that's a fairly significant number that the Vemos operations currently provide to the city to assist them in meeting that debt obligation, multiple millions of dollars.
Ian, it's important to note, too, that that originally, the plan was to build a power plant that would generate the revenues to pay off the bond. The power plant, as we all know, was never built. That whole project failed. But this activity that we're involved in now is sufficient to retire that bond indebtedness over the existing life.
At some point, yes, yes, at some point. That, that bonded indebtedness goes up annually and eventually levels off. This year, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but this year, the general fund will need to pick up a small portion of it. If we can continue to grow the utility business for the city, ultimately, the general fund will not have to pick up any, any portion of that.
The only other thing I could add, if I may, is, is the load of a hospital is very attractive. It runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so they're buying energy all the time. But this project serves 98 acres. The hospital is just one of the tenants in that 98 acres.
Councilmembers, I have some of those staff.
Councilmembers, I have some of those stats shared with me here. Phase one is the hundred-and-twenty-six bed hospital, and the forecasted peak demand was three-and-a-half megawatts of power going into Phase Two. They actually have forecasted peak demand of two-and-a-half megawatts. I raise those to your attention because we talk about operationally being profitable, and it's largely because of two main customers. Two of the biggest customers out of S E L A is Dr. Pepper Snapple and the Plastipack operation. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think they're roughly about four megawatts apiece. So the point becoming is you get these single-use, major, major, heavy power users is one thing, and then supplementing, in Mr. Viejo's case, of explaining that this is a twenty-four-hour operation. These are the types of operations that you actually want to finance against. If you're going to choose financing, or if we've got a cash available from, from the settlement, that certainly becomes something that you would look at to, to help reinvest those monies and help whittle down some of the stranded costs that we've had over time.
The other question? I'll for the vote.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number twenty is a request to adopt resolution number twelve dash zero-six-zero entitled Resolution of the Victorville City Council ordering the vacations, terminations of an offer of dedication for a portion of the California Avenue, also an offer of dedication for the adjournment landscape easement.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number twenty-one is request to adopt resolution number twelve dash zero-six-two entitled A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California Ratifying Actions Taken by Staff to Register for Participation in the California, can't believe I'm saying this, Cap and Trade Program, authorizing the designated account representatives to take action to implement the direction of the City Council to participate in allowance auctions, and directing staff to use the allowance revenue solely to benefit Vemos retail electricity customers. Do we really have to do this?
We really do have to participate as a utility. We don't have to, you don't have to ratify this action. However, effectively, there's zero risk to the city. There could become, or actually, there will and has, allowances have become available that we could actually auction or participate in auctions and make additional revenue. Effectively, as a utility, we get these allowances, we can sell them and make revenue, but we don't have to do that. If we wanted to stomp our feet and say we hate cap and trade, we could do that, but I wouldn't recommend it. It's something that we are actually required to participate in.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
Can't believe you made the motion, Mike.
No speech from Councilman Rothschild.
I felt somebody had to be the evil one since I sit on the air quality board.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Item number twenty-two is request to adopt resolution number twelve dash zero-six-one entitled A Resolution of the City Council, City of Victorville Revising the Table of Organization, Fixing the Rates of Compensations, and Establishing Fringe Benefits for Employees of the City of Victorville and Superseding Resolution Number eleven dash zero-five-five and Subsequent Amendments.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
On this item, I don't see, like, a spreadsheet that shows. I know it says no fiscal impact, but then it also says that you're bringing on twenty positions, deleting fifteen. But normally, you would see a spreadsheet where it would break it all down so that we could understand. I see some of the benefits you're taking away, you're bringing back merit increases. Can you tell me a little bit more about this?
Sure, this is our annual table of organization resolution. Typically, these are a little bit more exciting than this one. Usually, there's a consideration of a cost of living increase. That's not included in this one. Usually, there's a little bit more activity with positions. This is effectively just shoring up the reorganization that occurred as part of the budget. In most organizations where I've worked, this type of an action would all be considered at the time of the budget. All of the changes, all the additions and deletions that are listed in the agenda tonight are part of the budget that was approved. This level of detail wasn't available at that time because of a change in software and a lot of other things. Unfortunately, in my ten years here, I can only recall one time that the table of organization was actually approved at the same time as the budget. Next year, we hope to have it as part of the budget presentation so it won't seem quite so disjointed. But that's the reason why there's no fiscal impact. Effectively, the fiscal impact was approved as part of the budget. In large part, the positions that were added are very much entry-level positions. In fact, half of them are at our absolute bottom of the scale for salaries. Most of the positions that were deleted are actually management or at least supervisory and above, certainly higher level than the, than the positions that are added. So effectively, it's listed as five net new positions. Two of those are grant-funded for a civic center grant that we obtained in order to do some, some planning for the civic center. Two of them are customer service representative positions that are badly needed in water. We filled those with temps, and we need permanent replacements for those. There's actually one error in here that was caught after the agenda was published. Excuse me. There's a clerk typist position, which is, again, that's the absolute bottom of the scale for city salaries. It's listed in both engineering and water. That position is actually a split position, so effectively, there's, there's actually only four net increased positions. But what we're doing is making sure that we're able to deliver the highest level of service that we can to, to the citizens of Victorville. You'll notice that under Public Works, one of the positions that's being added is actually a sweeper operator position. We eliminated a sweeper operator in, I believe it was two thousand nine or two thousand ten. We've had some complaints as a result. That took us from four sweepers down to three sweepers. And listening to the public and listening to the council, that's the reason why that position is being added back, back into this budget.
It says in here that you're currently preparing a request for proposal for a study on all staff salaries and benefits as part of the classification and compensation study. So you're saying that this has already been done, and it was passed in this year's budget, correct? What was the fiscal impact in this year's budget for this plan?
I don't have that figure. The fiscal impact was passed as part of the, the total budget. It wasn't separated out. It's not separated out in this item either because it's, it is part of the overall budget. It's not, it would hit nearly every budget of the city.
Normally, you have your last year's budget for personnel and benefits, and this year's budget, was there an increase?
No, actually, there's a decrease. The city's personnel budget has been decreasing for the last, at least, four years.
When you absorb the RDA staff at a cost of one million dollars per year, how would that be a decrease? And is that implemented in here?
That is some of the changes that, you know, may have caused some of the position or title changes, yes. But that absorption is something that was done and is, was incorporated into this year's budget, yes.
So that was an increase?
No, that was not an increase because there was no increase in the number of employees. Employees transferred from the RDA to the city, or to the Water District, or to whatever other agency.
But that would, that would come out of the general fund, correct?
Some of those positions are general fund-funded positions, but not all of them were. Many of them, in fact, most of them are actually funded through the airport, which has a surplus.
Okay, but then that would be an increase to some of those positions for the general fund?
No, actually, it wouldn't. The number of those positions did not change. The number of positions, when those positions were absorbed, did not go up, it did not go down.
That's what would make it easier, so if I had a spreadsheet with what the costs are, and so how it all evens out so that I understand that there is no fiscal impact. And I don't have that in here, so that's what's making it difficult. I mean, it sounds good the way you're explaining it, but for me to feel comfortable in approving it, I would, I would need, like, a spreadsheet.
Okay.
Are you asking for any increase in the budget as a result of this table?
No, I am not.
We approved the budget in May?
I believe it was probably June.
June?
Motion carries with Mayor Protem Cabralis absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number twenty-three, Mr. Robertson.
This item, as if I recall, Mr. Attorney, we probably should table this item, continue it for three weeks.
Yes, that'd be my recommendation. You have the proposed documents for the Panda transaction on the agenda before you. I've had discussions with the representatives from Panda that it's their affiliate Sandhill. That's why there's a distinction with the name. They indicate that they're in agreement conceptually with, with the documents, but their attorney still is probably going to provide me with some comments. I'm not sure if they're substantive or not. If I had a request, we table this to the next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have that resolved by then.
We had hoped to have some very, very minor revisions based on discussions in the lead-up to the publishing of the agenda. That's why it was on here, but unfortunately, we don't, we don't have those yet, so.
So then staff's requesting that we continue this item to November sixth?
That'd be my request, yes.
All right. We'll now move into agenda item number twenty-four, Council Committee Reports. Ms. Vias?
I don't have any.
Mr. Rothschild? Mr. Kennedy? All right, and I have none. Council reports, agenda item number twenty-five, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Items for the Upcoming City Council Agenda. Mr. Rothschild? Kennedy?
Yeah, as, this is in response to Mr. Prohan's request, which I thought was a good one. He asked that the council consider, or at least conduct, a discussion as to why we do not have a street name for Martin Luther King Jr. I think that's a valid, important discussion. I think it's, my guess is it's one that's already been covered in the past, so I'd like to ask staff to give us some history on naming streets generally, and if there has been a specific issue with Martin Luther Kings. But I'd like to ask that we agendize that for a council discussion.
We all go with that?
Yeah, I'm all for that. Just throw a little history into this thing, since none of you, even our city manager, probably even assistant city mayor was around when this was going on. First time I got on the city council, an issue came up for a street change name, and guess where it was? It was from the end of Arrowhead to Bear Valley Road. That's Seventh Avenue on, on that side, but it's Seventh Avenue for a long ways on Hesperia side. And the discussion was, well, can we change that and make it all Arrowheads? There was only two blocks involved in that, and to be, best of my recollection, there probably was only four people on that street at the time. You wouldn't believe how much I got tarred and feathered over that one, trying to change those four blocks or three blocks to make it all conforming to Arrowhead. So as we go to make a, a street name, I would probably best to find a street that is new and unique that you can do that to, and not try to either change an old one, which everybody living on it would be upset, or adding it on to some other street that looks like a, a common sense thing to do. So you tread carefully when you start at least changing names. So adopting a, a name for a new street, that's certainly a different animal, but that was my experience the first night I was on the council, I think.
But you'd agree to have a discussion on this?
Well, I got beat up after that, and I learned my lesson and withdrew the request. I didn't know how powerful those four people were.
So you're saying that, that it's not a good idea to do this because the people are going to get angry?
People that jumped on me didn't want it changed because they've been...
What year was that?
Huh?
What year was that?
Nineteen eighty...
I think people are a little more open-minded.
Eighteen eighty-six.
And more cultural here. I don't think it's going to be a problem.
I don't think it has an issue to do with culture. I think it has an issue with people having business addresses on streets and having to change all of their addresses on all their mail and all of their...
I think there are probably a number of victims.
The point, the point is, is that let's get this agendized to discuss.
Don't do it, man.
I mean, I think it's appropriate, after seeing Space Shuttle Endeavor go down Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue down in Los Angeles.
There may be other issues as well.
Yeah, but, but let's, let's discuss it.
Ms. Mayor, if I could suggest changing the subject matter just slightly to focus less on why isn't there one, and let's talk about how do we make one happen? I think that's a more productive discussion. Certainly, we're happy to provide whatever history there is. I'm not aware in, in my ten years of it ever coming up as an issue or a request. So if we simply treat this as a request to either change the name of a street or make some future prominent new street named Martin Luther King Jr., I think that's a very healthy discussion to have regardless.
All right. Well, I think the overall consensus of the council is that we do have that discussion. Vias?
Just one other thing. And I don't know if we need a staff report on this, but we had, I received, and I'm sure we all did, an interesting letter from Mr. Ward on a water issue, on a fine. Am I the only one that received this?
I got that one, like, two months ago.
Now, that issue's been resolved if it's from...
Is it resolved?
Two months ago, yes.
Well, I saw it today for the first time. Sorry.
Items for upcoming agenda?
Oh, nothing.
All right, reports from staff and councilmembers?
Just sad at the loss of Mr. Don Tucker earlier today, early, very early this morning, so.
Yeah, for those of you that may not be aware, Don Tucker organized the Huckfin Jubilee. Very, very sad loss for this community. All right, with that, we, I have nothing else, so we are adjourned.